This conference will now be recorded.
Start way here, stand here.
Thank you.
I'm sure you do.
I do.
Of course I can.
Yeah.
No word. Hold on. I know.
Yeah, right.
All right. Good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, June 12th, 2020-24, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Casper.
I'm here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Running late.
Councilmember Leha.
Present.
Councilmember Servini.
President.
Mayor Strobin.
Here, thank you.
All right. Clerk, can we please call up any public comments from the audience?
Al Filla.
Al Filla, 36016 Northwest Jenny Greck Road. Welcome back, Myrna. Long time no see. I want to hear anything about the wreck. Okay, God, summer is here. We've had graduation last week. There was a middle school choir, the middle school band, the pride fest. God, things are just busting out all over. On Monday night, La Center United had a a gathering of the various people that make up La Center United. It was a full house for now, you know? So they did an excellent job. Let's see. So we got a lot of things coming up. Again, flags will be on the bridge this weekend because Flag Day is, of course, on Fri- Saturday.
Friday.
We got the flags to the church, right, Mayor?
Yes.
No?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
Melissa Flat.
Melissa Flat with La Center United. I just wanted to come in and give a quick report. On Monday, we did a volunteer, a citywide volunteer appreciation dessert. We had forty to fifty people in attendance, and these are all the local organizations.
Please.
Anyways, anything that's really dark were organizations that we came up with on our own. Anything that's a little lighter were people who showed up who were like, oh, I volunteer with this group or I volunteer with that group. And what we did is we had them put a star next to all the organizations they volunteer with. So we only had, I guess, forty to fifty people, but all those stars, which is saying how many people volunteer for more than one organization. I've left in front of you each, Mayor Strobin got one after the event he popped in. Sean, I will get you one after the meeting for your volunteer work. What we handed out to all the volunteers. And so we're really hoping to build bridges amongst these groups and figure out how we can all work together. We went with the theme of the bee, and Desi and I have talked about, we're going to try to figure out how to come up with a hive, right, and all the volunteer places in the hive, making La Center, you know, better together.
Oh, I love that.
Anyway, so that was the breakdown. We had people from all organizations. We have people from the school board, youth football, to Kiwanis, which is brand new. They're trying to start here. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Thanks for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. There are no more comments from the audience.
Wow. But the attendance that there is, all right. Thank you for coming. If there's any public comments from those calling in, please press star six nine to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Star six, not star six nine.
Star six, yeah. Thanks, Maria.
We're not trying to block anybody's caller ID here.
The nineties, the gray hair. If there are any public comments coming from those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. No callers?
No comments from the callers.
All right. Are there any public comments to be read?
No public comments to be read.
All right, that moves us to the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion, we do have a late addition to the consent agenda. That's for a city planner, city planning commission committee member. That was something that I gave to you guys at the start of the meeting. I would like to know if we could add that towards new business at the end of the meeting, towards the end of the meeting. Does anybody have an objection for that? Yes.
Does it have to be moved to the new business, or?
It can be. It can be added at whatever point. That is the point where we, where you have on your agenda to add items that are new, but they're, if it is the pleasure of council, you can amend the agenda to add it at any point. But I'm not sure that folks have had a chance to read it.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, was wondering if we can add it to the consent agenda.
You make a motion and if I, you certainly can if that is the pleasure of council.
You'd have to make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, I move that we place this applicant on the consent agenda.
Can we tell everyone who's the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
It is Dinah McLean. Dinah served on the planning commission from 2015, I believe, until 2019 or 2020 previously. Yes.
I think you have a motion to amend the agenda and to add it there, but I'm not sure that I.
I need a second, yeah.
I second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstained? It passes and has been added to the consent agenda. I do apologize, counsel. That comes back as a reflection on me. I'm one that did not get it to your pack at the time. So I do apologize and I do appreciate you guys taking the time to look at it and add it to the consent. All right, if there's nothing to be removed from the consent agenda, can I consent agenda? Boy, I cannot talk tonight. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passive. Thank you, counsel. All right. Well, we do have some presentations tonight. First up will be Chief Nor presenting the CCFR Levy Lid Lift. Chief? We've missed you.
Well, I kept getting good word that Chief Brian represents the district.
He does a great job.
They don't let me have to speak too much. I do also want to recognize we have one of our elected commissioners, Dave Townes, here. So CCFR is governed by a five-member elected commission. They are residents that are elected at large throughout the district. Just a couple of quick updates before I move into the Levy Lid Lift. TV update on Fire Station 23 here. Beginning last year, it is staffed every day with three personnel. Three personnel is kind of the national standard for minimum. And that's what we want on a scene because a three-person company can initiate a rescue in a fire. And by Washington law, two firefighters on a rig cannot initiate a rescue of somebody in a building. So it's important for us to have three. We were able to move to three-person staffing across the district last year. Station 23 is also our water-based rescue company, so you see a raft in there, and then they are responsible for operating the fire boats and the rescue boats. We actually had three water rescues this past weekend. You may have seen some media on that. The water's still extremely cold, even though the air temperature is hot. So they did a good job, including rescuing a gentleman right over here at Lewisville Park, as well as participating in a regional team for water rescue in Waschuga River. Each year I do station inspections. It's like, for any of you that are wherever in the military, it's like an operational readiness inspection. The station is stripped and cleaned, repainted, everything's buffed out, same on the rigs. We have six stations, and Station 23 was far and away the winner this year. That station and the rigs were all looking absolutely top-notch. So congratulations, Captain Gratzger and all the crews at Station 23 for their work on that. We've had a lot of serious calls lately. I just want to recap those in case you've seen something in the media about it and have the opportunity to answer any questions you may have. We had a wreck on the freeway on May 24th up here, right at the end of the center exit. And while we were treating a patient there, our ladder truck was struck by a vehicle that was not paying attention, did not yield to the warning lights, and the vehicle struck there. Very unfortunate that that vehicle that struck our ladder truck then careened into the scene and struck two people who were actually standing on the other side of the guardrail but too close to it, killing one and severely injuring the other. We had four firefighters on the ladder truck that day. Two of them were out there with it. One of them actually grabbed another patient and dove over the railing to get out of the way. They, none of our folks were hurt. Really unfortunate. They're responding, returning, and working at accident scenes is one of the most dangerous things we do, and it's the second-leading cause of firefighters nationally every year. So just like we always ask for our friends in law enforcement and EMS, if you see us on the side of the road with lights on, please slow down and move out of that way. Just last week, we had a fatal shop fire. A person died in a barn or shop just across the freeway on Northwest 51st. So really unfortunate. We don't have that very often in the district. So that was an unfortunate situation. Several weird car crashes. We have torn, taken the roofs off four cars, four different vehicles. One was a concrete mixer truck. But over four different vehicles in the last month and a half. It's like, you don't do it for a long time, and then they kind of streaks. The same with some rope rescue incidents, where a rope rescue team, three times in two weeks, had to rescue people, set a rope system to get cars, crashes out of gullies, or people off a cliffside. So lots of good things going on there. I want to give a quick update on the ambulance contract. You may start to see something about this in the media. For the last ten years, EMS two, and EMS two is made up of La Center, Ridgefield, Woodland, Battleground, and unincorporated Clark County in those areas. And we have piggybacked, they do a contract for ambulance services, and that contract is overseen by two county counselors and one small city rep. The small city rep right now is Counselor Overholzer from Battleground, and the two county counselors are Medvee G. and Marshall. Sue Marshall is the chair for that. And the City of Vancouver threw us a curveball last month and sent a letter to us that said that we were, they weren't going to allow us to piggyback on their contract any longer. But they did offer a one-year extension. So Counselor Marshall went to work, did some politicking, and was able to secure that one-year extension on that contract next year. What that means is that EMS two, those five entities that I mentioned, the four small cities and the county, will be working to develop a contract with a new contract with the ambulance service that will go into effect January 1 of 2026. In the meantime, I would like to mention that beginning January 1 of 2025, Clark County Fire Rescue will be responding to and transporting high priority patients. So AMR ambulance, who you see frequently, will still be doing low priority patients, but the, what we call, there's five priorities, one through five. One's the worst, five is the least. Serious, the ones and twos, local ambulances here in your fire district will be transporting those patients, and we will work hard to make that continue into the next contract. I want to thank you guys for being great landlords. Our CARES team is right there at the end of the driveway. A lot of great things going on with the CARES team. And to not take up all your time here, I'm going to ask you if we can make time for Chief Jackson to come in some night and give you an update on that. The community assistant referral team, he's doing it with grants and outside money and outside contracts. We don't use fire levy money or EMS levy money to pay for that program, but they're out there doing follow-up, and we are getting every, every week, I'm getting letters from people in the community saying what a difference they've made in their lives for that. So usually, Mayor, there's an update that I send you each month, and the CARES team will have something in there. So why I came here tonight, I want to talk about a fire levy lid lift. So you will see on your August 6 ballot, a fire levy lid lift. In Washington State, fire districts and regional fire authorities are funded almost exclusively by property tax. We don't have any other income streams, no sales tax, no fees or anything of that nature. I take it back. We have fees on our fire marshal inspections, but those just fund the fire marshal program. But for emergency response, we don't get those. So we fund that through a fire levy. And the last time citizens voted on a fire levy, lid lift was in 2017. And so we're running the same language, the same levy that we did in 2017. What happens is, by Washington law, by Initiative 747, levies for entities are capped at 1% increase each year. So as a city, you're familiar with that. If you have on your property tax side, you can't raise your levy by more than 1%. So over time, what happens is we start out at $1.50 per thousand, but because we can only go up 1%, the property values change and the amount that we can collect goes down. So we're down to about $1.26 per thousand right now. So it'd be a 24 cent levy lid lift, and it brings us back up, and it essentially is a reset that for the next several years will be at 1%. And it allows us to keep programs in service, to keep firefighters on rigs, to buy the equipment we need to be able to respond. And so the things that we're going to do with that is maintain the three-person firefighter staffing on our rigs. We're going to purchase two fire engines and one water tender. So parts of our area are rural. So here in the city, you have fire hydrants, and there's a few streets out in the county that have hydrants that PUD have put water lines through. But most of the rural area, we have to take our water to that. So a water tender is about a 2,500, 3,000 gallon water tanker that we take the water with us. Our three water tenders are, one of them is 19 years old, two of them are 25 years old. So we're going to put the oldest one and the smallest one out of service, surplus it out, and replace it with a modern water tender. We have two fire engines left that are old. They're 24 years old, and National Fire Protection Association recommends that at 25-year mark, you rotate those out of service. So people buy them for industrial use and some other things like that. We'll surplus those out. But we, so we'll buy two new fire engines. And then what we will do is complete a fire station that is partially built. We annexed the City of Woodland Inn a few years back, and they had a partially-built fire station. We'd like to complete that fire station. And we have identified an area of the district where it's taken too long to get to the calls. Been a lot of development, and we'd like to initiate a second, ability of a second station. When we build a station, even though it might not be right in your community, it's part of a system, and it keeps more units in service so that if your unit's out, somebody else is probably going to be closer and more able to respond. So what I'm here to talk about, Levy Lid Lift, 24 cents per thousand on the August 6th. Any questions for me?
I do want to make a comment to you, Chief Nor. I got to tell you, you know, as much as I hear of governments wasting money, it's always nice to hear somebody stand up there and go, no, we've done 24 years on these fire trucks. We need to do this with the money. So I do thank you for being responsible with the taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you. For, if there are any homeowner association meetings, community groups, I'm happy to go out and talk. It's been an interesting journey, as I'm sure many of you have over the last several years, of just getting the word out. Media's changed. Used to put it on the TV, put it in the newspaper. That's not the only way we do it. So we have our website, our Facebook page, and some other things, but I like to get out and get face-to-face with folks and answer any questions.
Chief, I have a question about the CARES program. I think it's great that it's grant-funded right now, but is there, is there planning in place in case those grants dry up so that it can be continued within the budget?
It's actually, we are money ahead on that program, and Chief Jackson and his team just secured another $350,000 grant from the University of Washington to do some studying on folks. We got $185,000 last month, I believe, and that number might be, it may be $118,000. I should have came here back, but it's from opioid money for us to fund the CARES. We can't use that money for anything but the CARES program, but the way it's out, we have enough to keep funding it right there. We have contracts with two hospital systems to follow up on discharge patients and go out, once they've left the hospital, to make sure they're following orders and they don't get an infection, have to go back from the hospital or something like that. But yes, we are constantly looking for that, and a lot of agencies and entities like hospital systems, insurance companies, they're recognizing that if we do some follow-up with people or prevent, like the fall, we get money from AdSquad, the area agency on aging and disability, and we go out and put grab bars in people's houses. AdSquad pays for all that. They pay for a position on that team. But if we can prevent somebody from ending up in the system, it's going to save a lot of money. So to answer your question, we're always watching for the grant opportunities and the contracts people continue to fund that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I would definitely like to hear from Chief Jackson, because I know that program's very successful and really does a lot in the communities around it. In fact, I do know the sheriffs are also doing the same thing now or getting ready to, right? There's something very similar to it that's happening?
Yeah, very similar. The, that opioid settlement money is statewide is something like 15 billion over the next seven years, and Clark County is getting a large chunk of that. So hopefully, that revenue stream will help out for at least seven years.
We've run, Mayor, we run two CARES teams. One is the medical discharge, follow-up, referral. If you see somebody's living, if you have a neighbor that's like, you don't feel like they are getting the care they need, or sometimes, you know, we've seen those folks around, and it's like, are they being able to take care of themselves? You make a referral, we'll go out and check on them, we'll put them up to the right social services, and we've had several success stories with that. That's the one CARES team. The second CARES team is a mental health crisis co-response unit. That's a community paramedic that works for CCFR and a mental health professional from CMAR, which is a regional mental health provider. And CMAR is paying for that program right now. So we go out when there's somebody in mental crisis, and a lot of times people call 911 because they don't know what else to do. The police don't always have the tools, and if one of the only tools they have is take them to jail, they don't need to go to jail. They need something else, right? And they don't need to go to the ER because they may not be having a medical emergency. What they need is a mental health bed to get to, and our team hooks them up with that. And that's fully funded through CMAR right now, including the CCFR community paramedic physician. So yes, I'll have to put together a slideshow and come over and do a different presentation.
Yeah, it would be nice, because I'd like to see more support for it and for it to not go away. It's something that's definitely needed in the area. Any other questions for Chief Nor? Comments? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Superintendent Peter Rosenkrantz giving an update on the La Center School District. Peter?
I was wondering why I was.
Alex is going to hold the mic for you.
Wow, that was impressive. New record. So welcome, welcome. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. I appreciate all you do and your leadership of this town, and I'm thankful. I just love La Center. It's an amazing place to be. It's an amazing place to raise kids and live. You know everybody, and everybody knows you, and and it's just an incredible place. We had graduation last week, incredible event. Graduate or seniors, send them off out into the world. And as we progress through and we work on current technical education programs and AP offerings and expand our programs, kids will have more and more opportunities to be able to seek and do the things they want to do, and not necessarily what we're choosing for them, but they have options to choose. We had a grade 13 event where we had three students from our CTE programs join about 28 employers with other school districts and high schools around the area, and they had each student end up with a minimum of 10, setting up about 10 interviews and opportunities to be able to have a job right out of high school. And the third one I did not hear from, but of the two, of the three, two for sure have jobs right away. They were hired, picked up right away. And one of them, they were actually competing for like, hey, you know about that kid? Is he good? Could we get, you know, and I don't know if we're going to be able to pick him up. And it's great. They're getting skilled. They're getting family-based jobs in the skilled trades, and it's amazing. And we have a significant number of kids going off to college. We have scholarship night, I believe. I don't have the exact number, but it was over $300,000 of scholarships that our students earn through their hard work. Graduation was, that was unique. The students walked up with little rubber ducks, and so they got their diploma, and they'd hand a duck to the board, the board member that was shaking their hands, and they ended up with this whole parcel of rubber ducks at the end. It was, brought a smile to all their faces. It was really, it was really fun. I do want to appreciate the police presence, your work to bring police back to La Center. I have noticed, as I'm driving in, I do appreciate having your folks out there and just being a presence. You know, I do notice people slowing down and being more cautious through town during the school times, and now kids are going to be out. So please, just encourage folks to, a little added caution as kids are out running around and playing and riding their bikes and enjoying their summer. And just in case, letters have gone out, and everybody, I'm assuming folks know, but I'm sure on La Center families that will hit that, what's the police presence at the elementary tomorrow? We have our first PAL event, and there'll be significant police presence because they're working with kids, reading books, giving them book, giving books away. Think there's even an assault vehicle going to be there? Yes, all right. So, but just so everyone's aware, it's a great event, and we're excited to partner with PAL. And I do want to give one more, I just want to give a shout out to our American Legion. I got to be a part of the Memorial Day celebration, and again, one of those things that makes our town unique. We have Flag Day coming up, and I do love the flags on the bridge. And I just, it's the second year I was able to be a part of the Memorial Day celebration, and it was truly an honor. And it's just, just a chance to connect with folks and remember. It was amazing. And then I wanted to close with, we talk about trying to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Every dollar we take in is taxpayer dollars unless it's donated from a citizen or an organization. And we really work to be good stewards of those funds, to make sure they're going the right direction, make sure they're not, and also make sure we're not overspending. One of the challenges I know many of our neighboring districts are facing are significant cuts to their programming. And we able to, we've been able to retain our programming. We've made one adjustment in special education uh program offering, which we were able to, which we needed to uh adjust our para educator load. But other than that, that wasn't, it was done because of uh, an ex- uh, we had some major expenses going on and I needed to curtail that to make sure we stay solvent. There are many districts that are struggling to stay solvent and uh, we're maintaining solvency and serving our students at a very high rate uh as, as our, as our assessments and our test scores will show. Our kids are continuing to grow through the hard work of our educators. So with that, I, that's this month's report and I just wanted to say thanks. I appreciate being able to come up here. I know we're two separate entities, but I do appreciate the cooperation between the school district and the city. So thank you. Any questions?
I, I was gonna say thank you as well because the partnership that we have with the school district's been outstanding. As you'll see even tonight in one of the presentations that you're aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Okay, next up, we have Susan Dingell presenting a community poem from the La Center Arts Council. Susan?
As you can see, I'm not Susan.
I was just gonna say-
Dan Masterson. And uh, I'm a member of the La Center Arts Council. And good evening. Nice to be here. Uh, as you- My voice isn't what it used to be. I taught uh fourth grade for twenty-five years and I could outshot anybody, but it's gone now.
Let's hear it.
As you know, the uh La Center Arts Council recently put on what we hope will be the first annual uh La Center Arts Fair in Holly Park. As part of that event, we invited Susan Dingell, who is the Clark County poet laureate, to participate. And she created what's known as a community poem. She uh worked the crowd, getting uh comments about what people th- thought of La Center. What they remember about it would, and uh, I'll let her explain it to her. And she put it together as a collage and turned it into a poem. And it quite literally is a poem about La Center written by the people of La Center. I'm glad her presented.
Hi, everybody. I'm Susan Dingell. I'm very grateful to be here. It was really an honor to be at the first uh arts festival of La Center. It was a beautiful event and um, I didn't, I didn't really harass the people that were there that much. But um, this is what we did. The premise is that everyone was asked to contribute a few words or a line about the community. To be on, they were on little slips of paper. They were all put in a jar. And then when, I, I had to go around and sort of harass people to put some words down. Uh, but they were all very kind about it. And so all of the lines of this poem were written by people who were at the festival that day. Whether they were the vendors, whether there were just people going by. Uh, and it was uh, well, you see what it's like. And then, and then uh, Dan Masterson created a beautiful collage of the poem that you'll see afterwards, which is very, is very touching. As a poet laureate, I feel that everyone has a voice that we need to hear. And this was just one little example of that. I took a wrong turn somewhere because it's so pretty. We have great stores such as Willow and Fern, Small Town Art Festival, Sunny Day, Need Lunch. Beauty, creativity, fun, love, better together. What I love about community is its ability to come together and understand what is truly important. As it continues to grow, we accept others to join us in unity and togetherness. I love artsy hippie things, decorating with joy. Taco, ai, ai, ai. Drawing rats gives me joy. Cartoons to make people laugh. Free yourself, find your sovereignty in your innate artistic expression. Capturing time in one image. The ferns unfurling early, mosses grow crunchy late in the hot season. Maple leaves bigger than your palm carpet the ground with color. Aurora borealis, river paddle boarding, my happy place. I love the hunt and my finds bring me joy. We hope it brings you joy too. Loving, caring neighbors. The hands of trees reach around. Relationship building, warm weather. Everlasting oneness lifts and enlightens all hearts. No one is going to be left alone. I'm here, happy and in the hot heat. Yet I'm smiling, beaming with joy. Sunshine, young and old, living and loving. Sadness and grief, hope and memories and faith to keep going. So many blessings. Thankful. Sun allows sunflowers to bloom and here in La Center, nobody stays in the corner for long. Community.
We have a copy of the poem mounted in frame for the city council.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you. Susan, I'm so glad you read that instead of me because I would have butchered that. So thank you.
It was beautiful.
We also have a, a copy of it uh done identically just to present to Susan as well.
Oh. Oh, beautiful. Oh, that's beautiful. How wonderful.
That was great. Thank you very much. Yeah, if you could, Liz may want to see it as well. And attorney, you might want to pass it around. Thank you. Thank you again. Next up, we have Brian Cass presenting the golf cart and ATV first look. Brian, in his Hawaiian styled outfit for his last meeting.
Puerto Rican.
Oh, Puerto Rican. I'm s- sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Buenos noches, council. We are here with uh some information about what uh the city can do as far as golf carts and ATV zones. We've heard some discussions about interest in that, so we wanted to bring some information to the council uh and have some discussion with the council so that we can potentially come back uh to future meeting with a ordinance to uh actually move forward with one or both of these zones. So just a little bit of background, there's two different programs, one for golf carts and then state laws and, and requirements. And one's unique to golf carts, one's unique to wheeled ATVs as it's known. Um, and as I said, you can do one, both, or neither. Uh, it's up to the council. But we just wanted to kind of give some background and then get some discussion going here. So uh, as far as the golf cart zone goes, um, cities are allowed to designate a golf cart zone. There's an RCW um that we can follow. The golf carts are limited to streets that are twenty-five miles an hour or less. Um, and to drive a golf cart on a city street, you have to be at least sixteen years old and have completed driver's education training. You don't actually have a li- have to have a license. You just have to have gone through driver's ed, which is a little odd. And if your license has been revoked, then you cannot drive a golf cart in the city uh per state law. Golf carts also must be equipped with safety equipment. So you have to have seat belts, you have to have mirrors, you have to have uh reflectors. Um, and you have to designate the zone, the golf cart zone of the streets that you can go on with signage for motorists to be able to identify that there are going to be golf carts in the area. Uh, and then if there are any accidents with golf carts, there's a reported requirement back to the state. Next slide, please. There we go. That's alright. So there's another category of vehicles called wheeled ATVs. And this can theoretically encompass both side-by-sides, like the one in the picture there, as well as um four-wheelers with a handlebar. City council must formally uh pass an ordinance to approve ATV use. And you have to specify what roads that they can be used on. And then we have to publish that list of roads on the city's website, on the main page of the city's website. ATVs can go on streets with a speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour or less. Um, and to drive an ATV on city streets, you actually have to have a driver's license, not just gone through driver's training. Um, and depending on the type of ATV, you either have to wear a helmet or you have to have an enclosed vehicle with a approved roll cage. Um, you also have to have similar reflectors, mirrors, signals, that sort of thing. Um, and then tags are issued by actually the Department of Licensing, similar to your car or motorcycle. So we really wanted to prompt some discussion, some feedback from councils so that we can take that back and, and craft some ordinance that meets the desire of the council. So just some sort of talking points I have here on the golf cart zone. Um, there's an option to prohibit operation of golf carts after dark. Um, there is an option to require an inspection. Um, and you could also charge a fee for like a decal that shows that these golf carts are approved to operate in the city. Uh, on the wheeled ATV side, uh council has the option to limit it to side-by-side vehicles only. So the sort of two-seater enclosed, you know, sort of little Baja trucks that they have, like, like in the picture on the previous slide. There's other options you can add and many of the whe- wheeled ATV ordinances that I saw throughout jurisdictions in the area prohibited towing of sleds, toboggans, et cetera. So that was a common one. You can also impose other restrictions beyond sort of what the state law has. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions, but really wanted to prompt some discussion with council and, and hear what you would like to see as we come back with some code.
Before any questions, Brian, can you tell us um what areas, immediate areas surrounding us that already have ordinances in place for ATVs uh side-by-sides and golf carts?
Sure. So uh, Woodland has a wheeled ATV ordinance. Several uh cities in Cast- uh Castle Rock and up in Kellits County have wheeled ATV ordinances. Uh, here in Clark County, I know Ridgefield has a golf cart zone. I'm actually didn't do my homework here. It's like I should have, but um, I'm not sure if any other Clark County jurisdictions have golf cart zones. And I think we would be the first in the county to have a wheeled ATV zone. The uh county council did consider a wheeled ATV ordinance back in twenty-twenty. Um, and they eventually tabled that discussion, haven't brought it back from the table. But that's sort of a, a little bit of background on what's happened around the area.
Thank you. This was brought to you guys for discussion to kind of give direction to the city staff on which way you would like to see it go or if you even want it to happen.
Chief, what's your input?
Yeah, that was gonna be-
Yeah, yeah, exactly. What it's, so what's the energy like with all that added in with-
Well, I think Brian laid it out pretty much with the ordinances and the restrictions. And I think that you have to kind of go through and, and kind of figure out um what roads you're going to utilize for this and how it's gonna be utilized because safety is paramount and we want to make sure people don't get into situations they should not be in. So uh, I, I think more research needs to be done and more discussion needs to be had on the subject.
Is there a reason um helmets aren't required on the golf carts as well?
From my research, um, the state law refers to motorcycle requirements for ATVs. And there is a uh piece of RCW where if the motorcycle is enclosed and has seat belts and a roll cage, then you're exempt from helmets. But for whatever reason, golf carts have their own separate section of the RCW that doesn't refer back to that motorcycle. So they do not require helmets. It's kind of just a cork of-
Safety issue would be more, I mean, in my mind, um, the vehicle that hits them. How powerful would that impact be? What could the potential liabilities be? And the injuries that you're putting people into the smixed um use area as far as vehicles go. I think as the chief said, uh more research on all of those aspects should be done with input from fire departments, emergency um departments. And at least showing that we've done our homework before we barge into something like this.
And, and actually, I have to agree with you on that. There are cities in, in Florida and in Arizona that actually legalize golf carts and side-by-sides all over. Uh, even running on highways, which we do not have here or anything like that. But it would be um, a good conversation to have with them to see what their safety ratings are and how they tackle some of that or what they are facing uh and their thoughts.
I think maybe a workshop with all of those entities to answer and, and get community feedback too.
Yeah, definitely community feedback. I agree.
I have to agree with that because after just being in the car accident six weeks ago and seeing that, how is this open? That there's no protection and we'd really have to discuss this whether, where I, before I would just jump on board with that.
Well, I think the question is, do we want to do that? And look forward and work from here forward? So I mean, if we decide, yes, we want to invest all of that time, then those are absolutely things that we have to do. But if we decide that we're not interested, then I think we need to say that and then table it for another time. I, I don't believe that golf carts meet the definition of, of, of a motor vehicle in the RCW like, like ATVs, motorcycles, those kinds of things do. They're operated differently. So I think that's what, what gives them a, a different set of rules, kind of like what uh, what Brian was talking about.
I understand the differences as far as the operation and, and you know, how they're used. But um, when you're then putting them on the same streets as other vehicles. Because we don't, I think, we don't have a great many vehicle or streets that are improved enough to start mixing that much-
Yeah.
-traffic.
Ridgefield's had their golf cart zone for quite a few years.
Yeah, I think it was maybe twenty-sixteen.
Yeah, quite a while. Um, I don't know if there's been any m- minor collisions, but I know there hasn't been any significant ones, but they're pretty restricted on the roads that they go to. So that's kind of part of part two. If we want to move forward, then we have to look at, at the roads and where, where it would need to go. I mean, obviously somebody, if they get in a collision, is going to be hurt significantly worse than if they were in a, in a vehicle, so.
And again, in the golf cart zones, it's, you can only do it on twenty-five mile an hour or less streets. I think in Ridgefield, they started out with just sort of the downtown area. And then eventually it was expanded to the whole city where there's, you know, all the twenty-five mile an hour streets in the city. Um, and I don't recall, I can do some research, but I don't recall similar to you hearing about any significant accidents that they-
Is there ever any timelines, like time of day that they are allowed? Was there any restrictions, like they can be out past?
Council can input and the ordinance can add a restriction, like can't operate it after sunset, just sunrise.
Or dusk.
And there's a lot of times where there's places where, you know, if you are approaching, if you're on a twenty mile an hour or twenty-five mile an hour north-south street, but there's an east-west street that's forty-five, you, you, you can create the ordinance or there's other eight uh jurisdictions that won't allow you to cross that line. You can work your way all the way through the neighborhoods when it's, where it's, you know, twenty-five miles an hour, but you can't cross those highways or-
Of course.
Higher speed roads.
Yeah.
It's, they're convenient. I mean, it's, but there's a lot of people that already think that they're legal and are doing it anyway.
Go down to Chevron and get snacks, you know? I mean, that's what I'm, that's what my husband would be like.
There's quite a few people that are doing that.
But yeah, other than that, what would you, yeah, go to the football game? Yeah, well, you're gonna have to head to Craig. That'd be cool.
A lot less spaces too, right?
Well, yeah.
What are, what are the drinking and driving laws for these? What would those be? Those are the same?
Absolutely the same.
Good. Yeah. So is this something the council would like to-
Bicycle.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Really? On a bicycle? For real? On a bicycle? For real?
I mean, is it wrong to say that, like, for an adult, I could say, okay, I don't, I don't mind continuing the conversation, but if I thought about my own sixteen-year-old driving one of those, I wouldn't want them to have the right to drive one? Like, I don't want my child in that, you know? Like, but I would want to drive one.
I wouldn't want your child.
Well, I wouldn't want it, that's what I'm saying, but it says sixteen, so can we change the law? Like, you need to be twenty, you know, you need to be thirty-five or older to ride it, right? You know, just like at the height, you know? Like, I just saw, you know, my kid would be like, oh, well, it's legal, all the, you know, I'm driving my friends. I'm like, yeah, I wouldn't want that.
If you can, let me know so I can get my sixteen-year-old stop driving cars.
So, is this something you guys would like to explore and move further with, or something that you guys would like to table or pass on?
I would like to explore it further.
I would as well.
I'm indifferent, so, I was gonna say percentage-wise, I could go either way, so I'm, I'm happy to talk about it.
I would pass on it. I don't think it's safe.
I think it's no different than somebody choosing to operate a motorcycle. I mean, you're, the risk is fairly similar with the same amount of safety, you know, availability. And even like with an ATV and the roll cages and stuff, probably even more safe, in my opinion. But, I mean, I know you're putting that risk for people to be using them inappropriately and stuff, but that's goes to say without anything, I mean, I think, I don't know, I think it's a great opportunity to have alternative transportation, less impact to the roads. Um, you know, it does maybe give some kids an opportunity to not get behind the, you know, motor vehicle for their first time driving, I don't know.
There's a lot of children that are very careless on bicycles.
Boy, yeah.
They seem to make it, so.
Yeah.
And without wearing helmets.
I just think it's worth exploring, in my opinion.
Okay.
Well, if I'm the tying bow, and I mean, if they, if these ladies are not interested and they want to talk about it, if I'm the, I don't know, is that what we're kind of voting on it, or what?
No, we just, we just would like to get an idea of what direction you guys would like us to go in.
Well, like I said, I'm indifferent, so if we have nothing else to talk about, then sure, let's talk about this, but if we have another important thing, let's talk about that, so.
I just think with everything else that we're doing, this isn't the highest prior, doesn't become the highest priority in my mind. Um, let's, let's get some roads improved and then come back to something like this.
That's actually on the agenda here soon, too.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, I'm open to it, yeah, for sure. I know, it's fun to, yeah.
Brian, do you have any questions for council?
I don't think, I didn't know what Myrna's thoughts were, but that's the only question I have.
Well, you want to know my thoughts? You know, if somebody's driving, which happened to me, the other party's driving distracted, the, I mean, there, people are gonna get hurt really bad in that, in that, in that rig right there, um, they'd probably be dead. And so that's what I, my concern would be, that we allowed this in our city, and there's always going to be that one person that's driving distracted and over the speed limit. And it, it just, it's too soon after I just got clobbered to think about then allowing this on our streets where somebody could, could be potentially killed and definitely seriously injured.
Thank you.
Gives you a direction.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Staff reports. Uh, I want to thank everyone for attending tonight. I don't remember the last time, well, I take that back, I do remember the last time we had a big meeting like this, it was more along the lines of controversial topics. Uh, I don't think there are any of those tonight, so I do appreciate you all attending the city council meeting. I do want to remind people on the record that it is illegal to drive ATVs side-by-sides and golf carts on city streets as of right now. Um, I have encountered of them, several of them in the last month to two months. Um, not that I'm a police officer or anything over there, chief. Uh, but it is illegal and, uh, law, law enforcement will be enforcing the laws on the books. So you will receive tickets if you are caught riding them or driving them. Um, another thing I wanted to speak about was the scholarship night. You know, I heard Melissa get up here and talk about volunteers and how great, uh, the city is, and, and it truly is. The city, we, we are blessed here. We have more volunteers, more committees, uh, per capita than I can say probably Ridgefield or any of the other cities local or around us. Um, it's amazing. And when I was attending the scholarship night with the Lions, it was really, it was something special to see those kids get up there and be presented these scholarships, whether they be for five hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They were smiling all the way up and all the way back down. Um, and council members serving, I was, I was rather impressed to see you up there presenting a couple of those scholarships. I, I didn't know that your family did that, that was, that was pretty good. So thank you. Uh, and thank you, Peter, for invite. Um, welcome back, Myrna. We missed you. We hope you're healing well. And I'd also like to introduce Janine, Janine Parker. She is our new city attorney. She is a standout leader in her profession. She attended Idaho State University and Seattle University School of Law. She has worked in the Attorney General's Office and was the city attorney for University Place. She is a current city attorney for Ridgefield and now La Center. I appreciate you coming on board and helping out the city. Thank you.
I'm happy to help and happy to answer questions of council anytime or staff, and I think I'm working with Maria to kind of come up to speed on what all the processes and, and things are, but, uh, please let me know how I can help.
She has jumped headfirst and is doing a magnificent job.
Great.
Uh, on another note, I will not be at the next council meeting, so council member Casper will be running the show. And I would like to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July. With that, council comments. Council member Fox.
Hi, good evening. Glad to see so many folks here. Uh, thanks so much, chief, for your presentation. Um, just so thankful for all the work and the expansion you guys are doing, because mental health is on the rise and you guys are adapting and changing instead of clogging up the hospitals and the fire and all that, you're trying to make solutions, so that's awesome, and I'm excited for that. Um, it's good to know to communicate that there's different types of service, you know, cares, like you explained, that helped me understand as far as setting people up and helping them in their home and actually, you know, focusing on the mental illness. Um, but yeah, I just thank you, Melissa, for all your work with La Center United. Um, just wonderful program, just continues to grow and I just love it. Um, I wish I had more time in my schedule to help. Uh, next year I have a new job as a director at a new private school, so I will get off at three o'clock, so I hope to be in Baltimore and come back and be in town and not be working so late, because it makes it very difficult as a single mom, trying to run a business and come back and volunteer extra. So, as much as my heart's always like, I want to go to that, I want to do this, it's like, I also need boundaries, and I am one woman, so I try to, you know, really put my energy where it can best be served, so. Um, also, I know that Susan has left, um, but I just wanted to say that was a very beautiful poem. Um, that was very nice poem, sir, usually going by the wayside nowadays, I feel like, so that was really beautiful to see that creation, especially about our great city. So, thanks so much for coming, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Council member Casper.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I agree, I think that the poem was a nice surprise, and I'm even happier that you didn't have to read it, Mayor.
I know, she did so good, I don't want to tell her. Yeah, she's such an artist, I loved it, yeah. That would have been, yeah, I would have grabbed it from her, don't worry.
Um.
I'm a teacher, I can read.
Yeah, summertime's coming, so, uh, lot more events, so get out and see the, the things that are going on. Uh, Saturday is the closing ceremonies for La Center Little League, um, for the regular season, and then they'll have the announcements for the kids that have made the, the All-Star team. So, um, for the, the Little League kids, there's a, a few different events going on, well, assuming that it doesn't rain us out, but, um, there's a, a pitch-hit-and-run competition, um, that the kids can sign up for and, and do, and then, um, there's also going to be a home run derby that's sponsored by T-Mobile, which we've, uh, the Little League got a, a grant for, and one of the things is, is you have to put on this little home run derby for the kids, so it should be a lot of fun. So if you're out and about, come down, take a look. Concession stand will be open.
What day is that again?
Saturday.
Oh, this Saturday?
This Saturday, yeah.
What time?
Starts at ten.
Ten, oh, okay, I'll be around.
So, uh, and it might be over really quick, if it's, if it's raining, so who knows? But, um, yeah, that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you. Council member Boyle.
Good evening, everyone, it was good to see, uh, a lot of new faces tonight. Um, yeah, thank you again for the poem and, uh, for the fire chief up here, that was a lot of great information. I really don't have a lot. I will not be at this next meeting either, this is my notice. Um, I'm getting ready to go on a cross-country trip with my kids, so, um, just looking forward to that, but, yeah, don't really have a lot.
Thank you. Council member Lao.
I just want to thank everyone for coming this evening, and I just thank everyone that's listening that for the huge outpouring of love while I was in the hospital for the eight days, um, I had so many people come and visit me at the hospital and bring me flowers and plants, and for five weeks, I had people from my church bringing me food every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Um, just overwhelming outpouring of love, and, um, I think that's helping me heal, I am getting better. Um, I'm, I'm thankful to my two sons that came tonight, because otherwise I would be in a rehab center for months. Um, so I'm very thankful for that, and I too am very thankful for this cares program. Um, and I appreciate how that's helping with the police too, because jail is no place for people that have mental health problems either. We, it's, it, it's just not the right place for them, so I'm thankful for that, and I too love that poem. That was, that was a very, uh, it was just a really sweet idea of putting that together, and she did a great job reading it too, I have to say. So, um, I'm happy to be back, I'm not one hundred percent by any chance, but, um, I'm, I'm determined, so I'm, I'm happy to be back. Thank you.
Thank you, and you can't even tell they're brothers, right? Council member Serbini.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for attending. Um, it's always great to have new faces and participation in our meetings and input. Uh, I would like to mention the farmer's market begins again on Fri- Friday, and that's always a great place to be for the community, see a lot of new faces and, um, meet your new neighbors and get acquainted and have a good time. Um, other than that, just like to encourage everybody to slow down, school's gonna be out, kids are gonna be running, um, and let's just keep them all safe. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, before we move on to the next one there, Maria, didn't we have, uh, concerts in the park, wasn't that coming up?
The twenty-second is the first concerts in the park.
Okay, so then we'll let, easy, okay. When you announce that, at the next meeting, make sure you talk about.
Well, the next meeting is after that date, so please come out to the concerts in the park on Saturday night at six PM, right, Alex?
Trying to set me up already.
Oh, yeah, this Saturday, no.
The twenty-second.
Yes.
And it goes for two, two months.
Yeah, and Public Works has added a concrete pad for those that cannot make the walk down. Oh, oh, I will stop right there. We'll let her go on record. As a matter of fact, guess who's up? Guess who's up next? All right. We have a Public Works and Community Development staff report. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor. It's pushed, okay. So, um, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and thank you for, um, hiring me to be part of Cityable Center, I appreciate that. Um, so I will say that the splash pad is opening up on the eighteenth.
Oh, yes, this is your first meeting, right?
It is, it is, so there you go. Bada bing, bada bing. Okay, so in, uh, for the staff report, basically in Public Works operation, I'll just report, um, on, I'll hit a few highlight items, you guys already have this in your packet, but our road repair, we're doing some road repair on West V Avenue, it's, uh, heavily needed, and we're going to be doing that on Monday. We started today, we'll be finishing up on Monday, the seventeenth, and then we have the concrete pad that was installed, which is in the back of the parking lot, which will allow ADA access for the amphitheater. And then we had, and when we go to our wastewater plant, our bio solids dryer broke down, and so what we did is we repaired that, but in the interim, we were, uh, had to haul two loads into the, um, Three Rivers Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is in Longview, so we held, held a couple loads there. Um, and then also, we bought a new jet rodder nozzle, so we're gonna go out and we're gonna start jet rodding our storm and sewer lines and, and getting those up, so we don't have some clogs in there, do some preventive maintenance there. In, in regards to administration at the wastewater plant, uh, I just want to say that, uh, we submitted our annual lab accreditation renewal, and, um, so that has gone to the Department of Ecology. And then in regards to engineering, we have, uh, HHPR completed seventy-five percent of the design drawings for the Pacific Highway, Highway Shared Use Path, and the city plans to pursue construction funding for that. We actually submitted a Safe Routes to School grant on the sixth, which was last week, so we hope to get funding, some additional funding for there. And then also, DJNA has completed fifty percent of the drawings for the safety grant we received from WashDOT, and, um, that is for doing some safety improvements on La Center, Timmon Road, Pacific Highway, and Spencer Road. So that grant was, uh, seven hundred and ten thousand in, in, uh, construction and a hundred and forty thousand in design. And then we have right now, out to bid, we have requests for bids out for painting of the police building, and also for fencing the upper parking lot for the police building and having secured gated access, but, and those bids are due back on the thirteenth, which is tomorrow. We have an RFB out for road striping in the entire city, we haven't striped our roads for about five years, so that's out, those bids are due back on the eighteenth. We have an RFB out for janitorial services for the city buildings, and those bids are due back on the thirteenth. And I'll be, uh, talking a little bit about Resolution four seventy-seven that I submitted in your packet tonight as well. And then we have an RFB out for slurry seal, which is our parking lots and striping of all the city parking lots, and that's due back on the twenty-first. In addition, the Safe Routes to School and Signal on Fourth and Highland, we're waiting for WashDOT's obligation to come through so we could start working on that signal there. In the building department, we have twenty-eight homes under construction under, at Highland Terrace, which is off West Fourteenth Avenue, and then at Case Place, we have eight homes under construction. Uh, Stevens Hillside, which is off North Fork Avenue, we have seven homes. Lockwood Meadows, we have nine homes under construction there, which is, uh, north of Lockwood Creek, Creek Road. And then the Shell Station up there at the intersection, the Mini Mark, they are finishing their staging and will go for occupancy soon. So that's kind of what we have going on for the construction report. And then you have attached the map, which shows where, um, some planning, yeah, that shows the, the one right before that, sorry about that, yeah, that tells the updates as far as the application process, and then the next page is the maps that show where those are located at.
Lot of information in that packet. Do you, do you, does council have any questions or comments for Tracy?
So this Shell Station has the, um, occupational permit, so they can start occupying?
They're, they're, they're getting ready to submit for that, but they don't have it yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, that was a great report.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, and welcome.
Yeah, welcome to the team.
Bye.
Bye, Brian.
I was gonna say, okay, push Brian out of the seat.
Adios.
Bye.
All right.
Remember, you're leaving us, okay? You're leaving us, remember this, okay?
We do have a resolution tonight, Resolution four seventy-seven E-Verify, and Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting again. Tracy?
Okay, so basically, this is self-ex, I tried to, I tried to put it in the staff report and make it very self-explanatory, what the purpose of it is. So basically, um, every new hired employee needs to be legally able to work for any jobs that are bid within the city. So this ver, this E-Verify system is just puts in place, so when we have a contractor bid on a job, they are required to use this E-Verify system to make sure that they have hired legal workers, so our tax dollars are going to support that. And that's basically what it is, we are required to have it, and I noticed it when I came here that La Center didn't have that, so I just created it, and there you go. If you have any questions, ask away.
Any questions, comments, concerns, conversation?
So I'm guessing you went back and took all the current employees and processed them?
No, you don't, you, no.
You don't go pack?
No, if we get audited, we could be asked. No, if we get audited, we could be asked that, but there's a tracking system, and basically, we're just gonna put it in the contract that says that we use the E-Verify, and it's the responsibility contract to send that to us, and we'll just keep that for audit records. Oh, not employee, employees of contractors.
Oh, contractors specifically, not, okay, sorry, I missed that. I thought you were saying for just hired folk, okay. You're talking about outside, okay, got it, moving on.
Questions, concerns? Can I get a motion?
I move to approve Resolution four seventy-seven as presented.
You guys are.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, actually, this being a resolution, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Council member Fox? Council member Casper?
Yes.
Council member Boyle?
Yes.
Council member Leah?
Yes.
Council member Servini?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Ordinance passes. Thank you, council.
Thanks for missing that, Brian.
All right, well, we have another resolution. Resolution four seven-six, interlocal agreement with the La Center School District and acceptance of donated right of way. Mr. Brian Cast will be presenting. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a quick refresher, I know everyone's probably familiar with the project, but this is, uh, in relation to our Fourth Street, uh, widening and Breezy Creek project, which also includes the signal there at, uh, Fourth and Highland. Um, city got, uh, design funds from, through a state appropriation back in twenty nineteen, and we started work back in twenty twenty. By twenty twenty-two, we had a ninety percent design complete, and that ninety percent design had a new stormwater pond in the outfield of the elementary school softball field. Uh, that design was completed in conjunction with, uh, former, or previous school district staff. Um, and when I came to work with the city and met with the new superintendent at the time, Mr. Peter Rosenkrantz, we both agreed that that wasn't maybe the best spot for that pond, and so we started looking at other options. Um, from that conversation, we worked with our engineer and looked at some different possibilities, and the best solution seemed to be to expand the existing pond that is, um, just sort of outside the softball field. Um, it's a pond that already exists and takes water from the school, and basically you could expand it and have it serve the road project as well. However, in order to, um, modify that storm facility and get the water to it, um, there was one cost for redesigning, um, the project, and two, there's going to be additional construction costs to install the stormwater, um, line that runs out to the pond. Um, so the agreement, uh, that has been reached and was approved by the school board last night would be that the school, um, donates the right-of-way easements necessary for the construction of the project, and that the city, um, takes over the maintenance of the stormwater pond, and then, you know, constructs these improvements, which help improve not only the city street, um, but also the safety of the school and students. For example, the, um, intersection, the first phase of that project, we received, um, just about a million dollars in Safe Routes to School funding, because we will be putting a, a push-button signal in there, so the students who are walking to school can have, you know, a walk signal, stop traffic, and then also as buses are leaving, um, the school in the morning and in the afternoon, they can be preempted and be able to exit quickly and safely, um, without conflicting with other vehicles, and then, you know, traffic flows can go back to normal more quickly. Um, let's see here. We also recently, as you know, received, uh, an eight point four million dollar grant for the Fourth Street project, so, um, while we did break off the signal project as a phase one, we're now fully funded for the overall project, so, um, you know, the, the need for this right-of-way and these temporary and permanent, uh, easements for the stormwater pond are upon us at this point. Um, so there was a couple presentations to the school board. We made a couple modifications to this agreement based on their feedback. Uh, we added pond maintenance that would, it would only regularly scheduled non-emergency pond maintenance would only take place outside of school hours. Uh, we added some language to, uh, protect and indemnify the district, uh, from the work that's going on. Uh, protect some of their existing, like the, the reader board sign that they put up, uh, a year or so ago, and then added, uh, clarifying language that the work is all done at the city's expense, and basically the school, the district's only obligation is to provide the property necessary for the project. Uh, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, this was approved, as I mentioned, last night at a special meeting of the school board, and so, uh, if council, uh, passes this resolution, approves the, uh, IGA, we can move forward with receiving that right of way, and then we can get WashDOT obligating those funds, as Tracy mentioned in her report. Um, one other last piece, I think there's another key component of this resolution as well that goes with the new purchasing policy that we have in place, that the city council must pass a resolution to accept real property. So we're sort of doing a double whammy here with approving the, um, intergovernmental agreement, and council is approving the, um, receiving of that property from the school district. So, happy to answer any questions.
Could you go down to the map on page nine, just to kind of give us like an idea of where all of this is happening? I mean, I think I understand it for the most part, but I'm trying to figure out where that pond's at. And I guess, I mean, I don't have an issue with it, but I just wanted to get a visual. So is it like right on the back side?
Yeah, so right on the, on the right side there, you see Ivy Avenue, and then that, the blank white space there, just to the, uh, left of, or to the west of Ivy Avenue is that softball field. So originally, the pond was along the third baseline out, um, by the road, um, and it took up a pretty significant portion of that softball field, and there would still be play space, but, you know, if you hit a, a line drive along the third baseline, it'd be splashing down in the pond. Um, the, the pond that we're expanding is actually behind home plate and behind the backstop, um, just below where you see that storm easement to city, that hatched area there is the existing pond, and we're expanding it out towards, uh, Ivy Avenue. Oh, it kind of works, all right. All right, so, yeah, this is the softball field. The, the old pond design was right here. New pond design is expanding the pond right here, and then this is the outfall that goes down to the, uh, the creek or to the river. Um, and so, the, the remainder of this area, the, the right-of-way needed is actually pretty small. It's this dashed line here, so with the exception of the entrance to the school driveway, where we're doing some regrading of the road and need to come back a little bit farther, really, we're right on the existing right-of-way line, or maybe just a foot or two of additional right-of-way. And then these darker hatched areas are, um, either temporary, the slashes are temporary construction easements. The darker sort of dotted areas are temporary access easements, so just the contractor can basically drive around in those areas as they're doing the work. Um, and I can't read what that says.
We did get a resolution for that sign, right?
Yes, we added in language to protect the sign. Okay, yeah, I think that's... Yeah, the bottom, I guess the striped, double-stripe piece is temporary access easement. Hopefully that helps, yeah.
They've met with the school board several times to go over this, um, the school board. It was, was it a unanimous decision last night? Yeah, unanimous decision last night. Peter and, and Brian and the city have worked tirelessly to get this completed. You guys all have kids that are going to school in that area and know what it's like without a stoplight there. It's ugly. Um, I actually came through it the other day and thought, oh my gosh, this is absolutely terrible. I sat there for about ten minutes before I can get out onto the road. Uh, this is gonna help parents and kids alike.
I move to approve Resolution four seventy-six as presented.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, can I get a roll call vote, please, clerk?
Council member Fox?
Yes.
Council member Casper?
Yes.
Council member Boyle?
Yes.
Council member Leah?
Yes.
Council member Servini?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Brian, Tracy, Peter, appreciate it, and all your staff. Tony, I know worked really hard on it as well. Council, is there any unfinished business? How about any new business?
None.
None? All right, well, then can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.